Nancy, would you please roll, or call the roll?
Miller.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Valencia.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
We have a quorum. Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 2nd, 2015. Approval of claims for March 16th, 2015 in the amount of $122,302.09 and payroll expenses of $177,323.18. And item C, approval of claims for April 6th, 2015 in the amount of $210,348.85 and payroll expenses of $287,188.29. Is there a motion that the items on the consent agenda be approved? Motion by Layle?
Say.
Second by Fisher. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Layle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Benson?
Item number six are reports from boards and officers, starting with item A, the Public
Safety Committee, from the 3rd and the 2nd of March.
Well, the chairman of that committee is Mr. Benson, and I'd certainly allow him to make any comments that he would like to make, and if he doesn't like to make any, I'll fill in the blanks.
Can't think of anything I want to comment on, so go ahead.
Well, of the items that we talked about on the second, one of them was the four-way stop sign on, at 12th and Maple. To kind of give you a little bit of a background on there, there'd been a citizen request to make 12th and Maple a four-way stop several months ago, and a city, employee group made up employees from the fire department, police department, street department, and the safety coordinator and the city inspector discussed and made recommendations on traffic flow and street signage. This traffic flow committee had recommended Maple be a through street and vehicles not be required to stop on that street. The committee acknowledged that there were some changes by the property owner at the corner during recent months, but those changes were not significant enough to change the original recommendation. They discussed was the safety and exposure policy, which is on your agenda for a little bit later on today, and I'll talk a little bit more about it in detail then. We talked about a truancy officer, a truancy ordinance, rather. During this meeting, you know, before this meeting and before, at the request, the city attorney and I had researched this, the possibility of having a truancy ordinance, and really felt that Oklahoma state statutes covered us for what the school was wanting to try to accomplish, so we're not going to recommend a truancy ordinance. There was an open burning ordinance discussed. The Alva Fire Marshal presented a possible change to Alva's current burning code, burning ordinance. This current ordinance is very restricted, and it restricted, and if it was enforced to the letter, the ability to grill would be prohibited. The committee made a few recommendations as to, as to the ordinance in the area of fines and clearer definition of where permits would be required, and those changes were made. Those changes have been submitted to the city attorney for final approval and the once-over to make sure it's in order before submitted back here to the council. We talked about a Knox box ordinance. The Alva Fire Marshal presented a possible new ordinance to require new construction, install a Knox box to enhance fire protection. After hearing the presentation, the committee decided to try to accomplish this through encouragement versus ordinances. And then ongoing concerns, so there's not going to be a Knox box ordinance recommended at this time. Ongoing concerns by both the fire department and the ambulance department were the buildings, where they were located currently. Both departments have equipment that have outgrown these buildings and are issues. And that was what we had kind of talked about at that Public Safety Committee meeting.
For those in attendance that might not know what a Knox box is, it's like a realtor's lock on the house. The firefighters have a key to that so that they can get the key for the building out of the Knox box and enter the building without breaking down the door if they need to go in and check on the fire. Is that correct, Joe Don?
Uh huh, that is correct.
Letter B is the Cemetery Committee meeting from the 3rd and the 9th. And Joe Don, I was not in attendance at that meeting.
Right, and at that meeting, Margaret Barton was the chair and is the chairman of that committee. Pretty much the only thing discussed were routine business items such as the minutes, approval of minutes, section report, finance report, update on the pavilion ramp and rock project that we've got going on. There were no major issues there, so it was just pretty routine items.
Item C is the Finance Committee Report, and we have the chairman of the Finance Committee here, Mr. Miller. Do you have anything for us?
This evening, we discussed, starting to look at the budget, items are coming in from different departments, and we'll start putting that together and probably start scheduling budget meetings after next week. We again looked at incentives for new businesses wishing to locate inside the city limits of Alva. We looked at all of our claims, which we had two weeks' worth of claims to look at, and so we've got a large claims report, and if anybody would like to look at that, all three of us have a copy of that that you can look at. We looked at insurance and how we're getting ready to bid that out to try to roll in all of our insurance into one, and insuring some of our heavy equipment that was just purchased that we have not got in the marine coverage on at this time. We'll be getting that done shortly. And then we had some discussion on financing. Should we have to do anything with any dilapidated structures that are on the agenda tonight? That would be the scope of what I think was tonight.
Okay, item D is the Tourism Committee Report. Joe Don, do you have the minutes at that meeting?
Yeah, basically, there were two, pretty much two items discussed. The committee awarded $12,300 to the Nesska Tunga Arts Festival. They approved their finance report, minutes of the previous meeting, pretty routine items. The other thing that was discussed in some detail was whether or not to retain an independent auditor, to perform an audit of hotel tax receipts and the possibility of paying for those services. What this would entail would be us putting together, the city putting together an RFP to solicit for auditors to go to the hotels and audit the amount that they have reported to us and remitted to us to see if there were any discrepancies. I believe this ordinance, this, this tax has been in place for roughly eight years, and I don't believe there's been a audit of those, of those records at any time. Our ordinance does provide that we can go back for three years and inspect any such, any such records that we have and examine at any time deemed by the director or duly appointed agent or employee of the city. So, they've asked to solicit an auditor, get prices, get prices for that auditor, and have those funds, have those records audited.
Joe Don, what's going to be the scope of the audit as far as how long we go back? Is it going to be for just last tax of the year, or what?
I would say that, it wasn't defined by the committee. I would say that what we would be, we can go back three years and look. I would say to try to limit some of the costs, probably the last calendar year. But we're in the process right now of putting, putting it together in RFP so that it can be submitted, so we're probably looking at another month at least before we start getting those bids in to look at them.
Any more questions on that? If not, let's go to item P, which is the Planning Commission Report for March 23rd, and Chairman Miller is here on that one, too.
Member.
Member, oh, I'm sorry.
At that meeting, we had a request for rezoning. The owner wanted to request that two properties be rezoned, and on our agenda, there was only one listed in the paperwork, so we have moved that to the meeting here in April at the end of the month. We probably looked at that, and nothing was decided at that meeting.
Letter F is the NWAP Steering Committee, and Joe Don and I were both present for that meeting.
Well, would you like to start off and make any comments, or?
Well, the report is finished, and it was presented to the members for approval, and some changes were made, and it will be available as to what these communities in Northwest Oklahoma plan to do about future water needs.
What I would add to that is that, you know, it kind of reminds you, on April 7th of last year, we voted to enter into this and donated some, committed some money to the development of this plan. One of the big things that has come out of this plan that I think we need to certainly be aware of is that the days of cheap water are either over or almost over due to several issues. One, infrastructure, pipes, valves, and fittings have a 50- to 100-year lifespan, and the majority of the systems are near past this useful life. Regulations are more stringent, and compliance is costly. Most of the quote "easy" water, we've already got. Anything else that we try to get will require some, some sort of treatment, some sort of extra, you know, go deeper, more easements, which will cost more. There was something that's attached to that that's going to make those, that water more expensive. Again, landowners are increasingly realizing the value of their resources in and under their land. Competition, particularly where water is scarce, drives up cost. Federal government subsidies, which helped develop a lot of this originally in the '40s through the '80s, is gone. You know, and, and one of the other things is the decades-long availability of inexpensive, good-quality water. The water use patterns and expectations of customers have, may need to change to ensure the viability of future water patterns. Those are some of the main things that were brought out as far as the cost. One of the big things, one of the big positives that was there is really this area has, or appears to have, a substantial amount of water available to us, but we've got to be willing and able to pay the price to go get it.
And that was, took quite a bit of discussion because the map and the amount of water available is misleading because it's on private property, and just because it's there doesn't mean it's going to be available to municipalities, to industry, or to any other use other than that of the property owner itself. Any questions about that water team meeting? We will have copies of that report for you when it is finalized. In my mayor's report, the Water Team Steering Committee actually met with Governor Fallon on the 23rd at 2:00, and each of the steering members present was allowed to speak about their community and what it was doing to conserve and to look at future water needs and to work to find additional water sources. So I reported that we were putting in the automated water meter system, and I reported that we had potable water wells down by the river, and that we were upgrading our well field and reactivating and improving the existing wells. Then on the, that same night, we met at the, at the Oklahoma History Center for the Northwestern Oklahoma Alliance for Economic Development reception. It was well attended. On the 24th, the 4-H had a tree planting on the square. On the 26th, the mural society met, and they are planning additional murals for the community. We had a regular meeting of the Northwest Area Water Team on the 30th over Enid. And then in April, I went to the GED graduation at Bill Johnson, and they are continuing to be the top graduating institution for GED diplomacy in the state penal system. I met at the American Legion, which has reactivated host number 92, and if you know any veterans that might be interested in that, we have some projects on board. And tomorrow at 10:00, the American Legion will be presenting five boys state scholarships at the high school. Then on the 4th, the Seventh Day Adventists dedicated their new church, and it's located the intersection of Maple and First Street. I was honored to represent the city at that meeting. Any questions? If not, we'll go to the City Business Manager Report. Joe Don?
Well, one of the first things I'd like to kind of report on is that we neglected, or I neglected to get the Personnel Committee meeting information on here. We did have a meeting on March 16th. We heard the presentation from American Fidelity Assurance Company to provide a flexible spending account to enhance the city's health plan. We decided to move forward with this product as it'd be really no direct cost to the city. We just need to try to get it set up. We did provoke, discussed proposed changes to the OMRF trust indenture, which is going to be later on in this meeting, which we will talk a little bit further about then. And then we also discussed the possibilities of a training manual for new city council/board members. This training manual, if developed, would enhance the, would enhance the state mandated training for newly elected officials by providing city-specific information returning to Alva and its operations. As far as the Finance Committee, Finance Report for the month of February, through the month of February, the city of Alva anticipated collecting about nine, a little over $9 million, or about 68% of their annual budget, and expending about $8 million, or 59% of their annual budget. At that point, we were 67% done with the year. Through February, we had collected 4% more than February of 2014, and 7% more than February of 2013. Of course, the largest dollar increase from previous years was sales and use tax. Collection of this category is about $419,000 more than previous year's collection. Other major area of increases where we're experiencing are miscellaneous income. This is about an $821,000 increase. The main reason for this increase is loan revenues and lease revenues, lease revenues specifically for the airport, which is receiving, had received some oil revenues off of the wells that are produced out there, producing out there, and that's the reason it's in miscellaneous, is because those are a few smaller categories, and you're just seeing a lot of revenues this year. As far as our expenditures go, we're looking about 6% less than 2000, February 2014. Current personnel expenditures are about 7% more, and materials and supplies reflects about, an expenditure rate of about 14% more than February of 14. Other categories combined are, show a decrease of 16%. The projects that we are currently working on are AMR project. This project was advertised on the 20th and the 27th of March. We also met, direct mailed to at least three vendors. We've had a couple of other vendors express an interest in the project. At this time, the project is scheduled, bid opening is scheduled for April 17th, and have a water, wastewater committee meeting with staff to evaluate the proposals before the 29th, so a recommendation can be made for acceptance on the, on May 4th. We've got our Flynn Street project. This project was advertised on March 29th and then again on April 6th. Current timeline for this project would be bid openings on April 20th with staff evaluations and recommendations to, to award a contract on May 4th. We're working on our, as Councilman Miller reported, we're working on our RFP project for insurance. Currently, staff's updating equipment and building information, which will be required by insurance companies to accurately bid it out. It's anticipated that this will, percentage-wise, may lower our insurance claims, but there are some things that we are not carrying insurance on that will need to be insured. The benefit of this is having everything come do at once. Any insurance premiums are more consolidated on dates instead of multiple dates, and having some cost benefits. Have discovered that our fairgrounds lease for the horse track has expired and needs to be updated. Currently, the city of Alva has two leases for the fairgrounds property with the county commissioners and the fair board. The first lease is for the main portion of the fairgrounds, which began in 1948, and it's actually described by the streets and buildings that were a part of the original POW camp, some of which no longer exist. The lease in effect, and it's in effect until such a time as the Woods County Free Fair has discontinued for five consecutive years. The second lease is for what's known as the horse racetrack. This property is currently described by Meats and Bounds, and their original contract, the original lease began in 1962 and had a term of 50 years, but was revised for a shorter timeframe at, at later dates, but those which have now expired in 2012. I anticipate trying to get with the city attorney to try to sort through this and see what our best options are as far as recommendations on this lease, on this lease for the fairgrounds. Our sanitation transfer station, Cedar Ridge, has completed the concrete retaining wall, and the city of Alva crews have completed the dirt work needed to backfill to the retaining wall. Cedar Ridge has completed the concrete work on the lower portion of the drive-through as of today, and are cleared to start work, start the construction of forms needed for the concrete flooring on the building. Once, once those, once that's completed, they should be cleared to start construction of the building because we've approved all the submittals for the building. Myers Engineering is currently staking the sewer line. Once the sewer lift station equipment is received by the city, the city water department will start on the installation of this equipment. To date, the city of Alva, through, through our bidding and the work that we've been able to self-perform with the county's help, we've been able to save about $650,000 on this project. The street projects that we've got working right now, our city street crews have finished all of the curbing on the six blocks of streets on the east side of town that we've been working on. Two of the driveways, we had to go back and repair, one, one we expected to have done today. Crews are currently hauling in rock for those streets and backfilling the curbs and dressing up the curbing areas. Once this, and right now, they've moved, some of, some of the crews working on that while the rest of the crews moved up to High Street to string, to grade and string that area so that we can start our, our processes for that construction and repair. We, the, last week, I met with a couple of ARC board members and a prospective engineer, architect to help develop the ARC strategic plan, master plan. Expect to have a couple of more interviews, so to speak, with architects that have done work in this area before making a, going out for bids for that service and seeing how we proceed with that. Right now, it's estimated that that project could cost as much, depending on services that we request, could cost as much as around $50,000 to $60,000. And mayor and council, that would be my report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Steve?
Joe Don, regarding the Flynn Street project?
Yes?
Did the committees that brought this forward, did they discuss any other option of using this money other than Flynn Street as far as perhaps going into residential areas or building intersections that are, makes it for curbing and things? I guess I've heard from a lot of residents of why you're looking at that much money for two blocks of Flynn Street when we have all these other things in our residential building?
Well, it was 4th to 7th Street is what we were looking at, and yes, other, other blocks were looked at for these funds. There were other areas that were, that were looked at. They're all about the same priority level. All of the streets that we looked at were ranked, according to the passageway manual, ranked a three or, or lower 3, 2, 1 of the worst. And it was decided that because of the, I mean, when we looked at those, with those committees, for the amount of money that we were spending and the cash outlay, this was the biggest bang for our buck. Some of the other construction that was needed in some of these residential areas that we had looked at, to contract out for, required a substantial amount of money, I mean, pretty much spending the same amount of money for the corner of 14th and Apache, for example. But there were some other blocks looked at, there were some residential areas looked at, and the committee felt at that time that this was the best use in the biggest, you know, like I said, the biggest bang for our buck on those issues.
I think there's residents that maybe don't agree with that.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I mean, well, I mean, when it comes due, we always, I mean, it's not a done deal until we've accepted the bid, so we reserve the right to refuse any bid.
Would you like to see that come back before the council votes yet?
We'll keep the current time table.
Joe Don? Any other questions or comments? Before I go on, I did want to go back to my mayor's report very briefly. The Friends of the Library, through their chocolate fantasy, raised over $10,000, which is amazing. And they're still having some roof problems. If it would ever rain, they'd have leaks over there, and the roof has been sprayed again with a thicker layer of material, and an architect has emailed the library with preliminary plans for a library renovation, so be mindful that there needs to be some work done over there as well. Item number seven, public hearing to determine whether the following property should be declared dilapidated and constituting a detriment or a hazard and therefore a nuisance as defined by city ordinance and abated. Joe Don?
Well, this is a public hearing, so this is the chance for the public and/or the owners of this property to say their piece. I think that we should take them one at a time and let the owners first make any comments that they choose to make.
Steve, let's start with 305 Santa Fe. Is it represented here this evening?
Hello?
Okay, would you please take the stand and state your name, please?
I'm Duane Echols.
Thank you, Duane Echols.
What's wrong, what's the problem? I guess.
Well, as, I mean, as far as what was noted on the properties, some of the issues that were, that would go against and be decided as if it was a nuisance, you know, the building, yeah, what we've noted is the building is unsecured with an, with a unmaintained yard area. The building has broken windows which are open and the doors which are unable to be locked. Roofline appears to be rotting, the siding appears to be broken in places with collapsing awdings. The grounds have accumulate, have an accumulation of junk and trash around the buildings. It also appears as if the roof line is It also appears as if the roof, roofline is failing. The structures appear to be, as far as the grounds are concerned, a fire, a safety hazard. These would be some of the things that, according to our ordinances, designate a nuisance, which is what we're talking about. Now, it is, and I will say, I mean, that's the issues that we found. Also, some of the things that has come to light since this has come up, and since the letters have gone out, was that it appears as, I guess, I guess your attorney contacted us today, told us that there was, could be a federal lien against the property. It is involved in probate with some other issues. The fact is, you know, we're going to end up asking the council to table this issue because of the, the possibility of federal lien, because we won't be able to move forward with anything until that has been released, or we can't do anything that would, you know, the federal lien, if it were to, if we were to do anything that would take away from the value of the property, we can't do that with a, because of the federal lien, this, that could be there. I don't know that it is there or not at this time.
I think, or don't know if it is or not.
Yeah. But, so, you know, honestly, at this time, because of the things that have come up today, we're going to ask that, you know, I'm going to ask that both this one and the three oh five and a half be tabled when we get to that meeting, that portion of the meeting, so that we can research that and make sure that we're not violating anything that's already in place.
I can do whatever I need to do.
Yeah. But those were the issues that we found with the property, so you know. And that's the reason it was originally brought forward.
Okay. Was there anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Eccles? Thank you. The next address is one oh four Choctaw Street. Is there a representative for that address here this evening?
Yes, sir.
Please address the council with your name, please.
I'm George Kilmer, and I own the property at one oh four Choctaw. And I just, I just wanted to ask for some time to clean the place up, make the house off. I have started working on it, so I don't know what the weather's going to do one day and the next, but my work schedule, I haven't done a lot to this stage, however. And I am in the process of cleaning the house down and her, her, getting that, getting some help with it.
Okay. When we get to the actual discussion and possible approval or disapproval of the declaration of dilapidation, we will, we'll give, the council traditionally has given a certain period of time to the property owner to take care of that demolition if that's what's going to take place. So when we get to that portion, we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Bu, hasn't this property been addressed before?
I believe that they, somebody called me about it, one of the inspectors one time, and we talked about it, yeah. And, and we have made some improvements there since then. Matter of fact, that was moved even.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, some of the records I've got go back to two thousand and nine on this property, so that's the reason I wanted to kind of accrue you about it.
Thank you. The next address is one sixteen Choctaw. Anyone here to speak about that property? Okay.
One sixteen Choctaw. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
That's fine. And you are?
Don Proppin.
Did you have, did you have any questions? Do you want me to tell what I've know or?
What, what the complaints were, I understood that one thing was that the place isn't secure. It's always been locked, but I had a sister-in-law going there who acted out the key, and that front and back door.
Well, part of the.
All you have to do is pull the doors closed and it's off.
Yeah, well, part of the issues that we saw was, it appeared as if the building was unsecure. It had, it appeared as if it may have had some broken windows that were unsecure. You know, with the, the roofline appeared to be rotting and has some rotting, appears to have some rotting cedar on the sidings. The grounds had accumulated a lot of junk and trash around the buildings. Some of the outbuildings do not, didn't even have a roof and are experiencing some of the same rotting issues that the main building appeared to be experiencing.
We went in there and cleaned up all the plants. I'm in the process of hauling off all the rotten materials that still were there, you know, my, I'll rot them out. I don't know.
Well, those were what we, those were the observations we had made, the city had made.
Okay, you saying windows too?
Yeah, that's, well, my notes were that the, where buildings had, had some broken windows which were open, doors were unable to be locked, or appeared to be unable to be locked. Roofline is rotting, it had some rotting cedar siding. The grounds had accumu, like I said, had accumulation of junk and trash. Appeared to be a fire and safety hazard.
Well, Don, when we get to the declaration of dilapidation portion, which is next on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity at that time to tell us what you plan to do to remediate this problem.
Okay. There's a building, you know, a storage shed that is falling down back there, but I just haven't never got around to getting rid of it. But I'll have the opportunity to use that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. In just a few minutes.
Do we know when this will be?
Just a few minutes.
Huh?
We'll have the next part of the hearing in just a few minutes. You'll stay here. Okay, the next address is thirteen thirty-one Choctaw. State your name, please.
I'm Shelley Jackson. First off, I was a little bit stunned to get the paper because I did not get a notice of this, I've lived here my whole life, so I personally thought, courtesy letter, courtesy something would ignite, because for people like you with the knowledge, you drive by there, that property looks better than it ever has since we've lived there. When we bought the house and living next to it, I complained numerous times to the city and hoped that I could get somebody to prompt the owner to either help pay for the cleanup. I got no help, so Kevin and I personally paid, just sprayed every year, we mowed it every year. We've done everything we could do without throwing like we ever actually owned it to say, look, we messed up our house. So now that we've actually bought the place, it's almost, I mean, you could have even seen the house, so I'm not real sure how we even made the list, to be honest with you. And we're not aware of it, because really, I, there's not that much left to do, as a matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago, it might have been last, like Paul Carle, which is our first thing was to clean out, because it is ugly, probably per se, it is ugly. And the garage junk is terrible, but, you know, and the amount of time we've actually done it, we cleaned up during good weather time, and we were on the waiting list for a dumpster. And then I personally read that in the paper, so I'm not real sure how we made that list over a bunch of other properties in Alva that I personally know of that, I know at worst, and it's not obvious that they're cleaning. And to me, it's obvious, we've been working on ours, so I kind of felt like it was a personal attack. I don't really know who decides what properties to pick on, but.
So you did not receive a letter?
I did not.
Your first notice was when you saw it in the paper?
It's unknown, absolutely.
And what I'll say to that is, let, we've got, we've got information showing that letters were mailed out. I've had a couple of, couple of conversations today with Ms. Jackson. She, I know that she just purchased it relatively recently. I know that they've done a lot of work on it recently, and I think a roll-off box had been delivered today.
I don't think so.
It hadn't yet.
I'm active stockholder.
Okay. I know that they, I know that they're working on one. And because of the discrepancies in the notification that we have, I mean, because I haven't got letters back saying that they were undeliverable, but I also haven't got anything back saying that they, they received it either. But I'd ask that we probably, you know, when it gets down to asking about the ground, voting on this, ask that it be tabled until we have a chance to clear up the notification issue and maybe work with the property owner a little bit to get everything that we have identified remediated.
And I too have noticed the progress there, because we ride our bicycles.
Who does decide that? I mean, I don't, I don't even know how we made the list. I mean, like, if you wanted, you guys, you see what I'm saying? I don't really know what I'm asking, but who drove by and said, that's got to be, they got to get a letter about?
Well, we've got a, we've got two people that are assigned to that job task. They, we've got the city inspector that works on it some, and then we've got a part-time person that goes around and was charged with identifying dilapidated structures and during the growing months, identifying yards that needed to be mowed so letters could be sent on those and try to get those things issued out. And that's where this stemmed from.
So with mine being, like, are they just uniform letters? With mine being the same letter as, I mean, are they individual, like, with mine saying my grass needs mowed, and maybe this is just the building, are they all the same letters? Or is it?
Some of the specifics may be a little bit different, but most of the text of the letter is pretty much a form letter. But some of the, you know, when it gets down to siding specifically what an issue was, that would have been.
So these are, that is, that is why I'm what say, they decide?
Yeah.
Before you guys ever.
These, these gentlemen don't see it until it's printed in this agenda book and mailed out to them.
Could I comment? Could I comment that, as he said, that the property itself was brought up several years ago? And I don't know what our procedure is for re-verifying who we're mailing our notifications to, but we go to the county courthouse, we check the property, we figure out who the property owner is at that particular point in time, and we begin notifying that individual. I don't know that, and I would be curious if individual to Ms. Shelley Jackson, were notifications sent out to that person and that address? Or were they to a perhaps private owner of that property because it just changed hands?
The information that I have on the letter that it was mailed out, it was mailed out to Ms. Jackson.
When were the letters mailed out?
Mailed out, my letters were mailed out on March twenty-third.
And when were these photographs taken?
Relatively around that same timeframe.
Shelley, when did you buy this property?
Well, I had, actually, it's not a person, I thought it was like a container, but I had Kevin look for it in here and it was like eight years.
Eight years?
Yeah, eight years. Then at that time, it's been early. I mean, we mowed the front yard and high yard pretty good without, you know, and that, like I say, we don't buy, we're taking out fans, we're taking out trees, we're taking out bushes, we spray, had it sprayed every year, we just had it sprayed, but.
There was an old car in the pickup there, too.
Yeah, the old car in the pickup there, and the size of the house goes, it's pretty solid. I mean, we're not planning on living there, and trust me, it's going to save on our storage shed and the paint, and the garage ground has got to go. That was my complaint, because I don't know, it's to get hurt either. As far as the house goes, I think it's pretty solid. There's no broken windows, doors both are shut and locked. But let's say that the garage needs from, yeah, but like I said, it wasn't like we were not working on it, so, I don't know, I was just kind of stunned, you know, about it. That has got to be the number one, in third place, and now a lock, you got to figure it out. So, all right.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next item is, our location is ten fifteen Fifth. We have representatives from ten fifteen Fifth. Please state your name.
I'm Vanessa Pettit Brer. And I'm the owner of the property, she's my sister-in-law. And I acquired this around nine or June of two thousand fourteen. And when we bought this property, we started working on it. And I'm wanting to restore it. It's commercially zoned, so there's a business that's going to go in and is going to run into it, if allowed. And I've, we have touched the lawn, but I know it was in bad shape when we received it, so I hired some high school kids to keep the lawn mowed last year, and the trees trimmed, and they're starting to work on it again this year. As of the structure, there, there's not broken windows and not boards boarded up, and the rust is fairly new. And it's a sound place. We've been working on the inside of it for this reason, and we want to keep going with it. And we haven't had, we haven't been able to do it a lot because we bought it in May, and my dad, he passed away, and so we're still trying to work on it. I've just had a lot, I'm sorry. Had a lot going on, so we're in the middle of it because we want to get it back, back, back up, back up to comfort, everything, everything, would you take over, please? I'm sorry, guys.
Don't need to say my name?
Yes, please.
I'm Wyatt Brer. Properties mowed, all the limbs are picked up. We cleaned a ton of trash out of the front yard, as you guys well know, when before we didn't over-realize a complete disaster. We've still got a little bit of work to do on the inside as far as cleaning things out. My plan is, after the rainy season, which obviously we're getting ready to come into, we're going to try to knock the windows out of it, put new windows in it, get all that tech and care out. I believe there's one window maybe boarded. The rest of the glass is in it, as far as I know, I was in it a month ago. It's not, it's a secure property, doors locked. There's no structural inhibitions that I know of that settled a little bit, no main big cracks in the, in the stucco or anything like that. So I was a little bit surprised when we got our notification, and we got our notification letter by the way today. So I was a little bit, I wasn't real impressed about the timing either. So I guess my question is, all ye fine gentlemen, is what do we need to do about it?
Well, one of the things that I, that we had noticed, and that it appeared as if there may have been some broken windows in some areas in the back that needed to be addressed as far as that, but I did make a, I did notice that when we came up with some of these other issues with Ms. Jackson, as I reviewed the files, I didn't have a certific, notice that you had received yours yet. I do see that, I do have the concern about that, about the notification and our ability to work with you on issues prior to the council making a determination. And when it comes to time for that recommendation to be made, my recommendation to the council is going to be to table it, mainly for the lack of communication that we may have had with you. Letters would have gone out at the same time. Don't know why Ms. Jackson hasn't received hers yet. Don't know why you didn't get yours until today, when all of the others were received pretty promptly. Don't know why that's happened, but we need to work to try to resolve that. And basically, that's going to be my recommendation at this point, is to table this item until we have. we have the ability to work with.
And it'll be notified, I guess, whenever you guys decide to make a decision.
Well, what I'd like to be able to do is work with you between now and then and hopefully maybe it never comes back up as long as we get some of the issues taken care of.
That'd be perfectly fine. If we could have something writing that, what your expectations are for that property, then we can work from there.
I'm sure we can put something together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Joe Don, do these letters were sent out, do they also receive the photographs?
No, they do not receive the photographs. We just sent out the letters. The photographs are there for your benefit.
Okay. The next location is 1313 Fair Street. Do we have a representative for that location? You've seen the pictures in your packet. It's hard to see the house for all the junk cars in front of it. It is there. Okay, that completes our public hearing. Let's go to the discussion and possible approval or disapproval of declaration of dilapidation for the following properties and authorize the staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance. Let's start with the location A and B at 305 and 305 and a half Santa Fe. Joe Don?
Well, should we not take those individually?
We should.
Okay, let's start with 305 Santa Fe. Is there motion to table?
So moved.
Motion by Benson. Second by Fisher. Any discussion?
So, we table them down.
Well, on this, on this particular property, we've got some research that we need to do about this federal lien. Once that gets straightened out and us figure out what the issue is there, if any of the nuisance hasn't already been abated by that time, it'll come back before the, before the council to be declared a nuisance and have it be abated.
Dwayne, I know you've been working on this for a long time. Is there any light at the end of the tunnel?
Well, a couple years. I've talked through three and thirty. There's not that long to do.
I mean, I think one of the.
The lots are less clean here than they have been the last seven, eight years when they worked for so many years before that.
Well, I think one of the issues that Mr. Eccles has to, has to overcome before, he can do a lot of work, is the probate, probate stuff that we just found out about. I mean, he, really, he can't go do a substantial amount of work until that's been satisfied to my understanding. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Any more discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Alexia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Now, yes. And now the address at 305 and a half Santa Fe. Motion to table?
So moved.
Benson.
Second.
By Fisher. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Benson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Alexia?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
One oh four Choctaw Street. Mr. Kilmer, do you have a written plan of some kind? And the council usually allows sixty to ninety days for completion of a project like this, so I'm going to leave it to their discretion to put that in the motion.
Well, I was going to ask for a hundred and twenty to get considering work and whatever a weather and stuff with. I hope we get some rain, but that can slow things down, you know, and that's, I'd say I'm planning on getting it every, within that time for.
Did you say you have a dumpster there now?
No, I do not have a dumpster there. I have not requested one. I do have a dump trailer on loan.
Your plan is to demolish it though?
Yes.
Could I ask, when did you first receive any notice that that property was under consideration?
I didn't know when it was, just right off him.
Months, years?
It's been probably, well, it was grass and weeds to start with with him.
Okay.
And then I had discovered an old cistern there, which scared me death because it wasn't covered. It was just concrete and everything. I have since tore that down, pulled it off and filled the cisterns so some people, whatever, anybody wouldn't feel they're messing around with it. It did involve in, I have asked just recently for the yard to be sprayed. However, I don't know if it has been sprayed yet. I'd say I did mow it Saturday, I believe it was, right here Saturday. And have definitely, well, cleaned up the weeds and stuff around. There's, there's few at one end of it, but I can get those cleaned up soon as and later. Definitely, I can work on it the next few days. And just think, having any calls for work tomorrow or the next day, however, I'm on call to take residents from nursing home to hospital or doctor's conference and so on. It's just that I don't have anything scheduled for the next few days that's on my calendar. But I have the graphic that cleaned up and basically this part of the weeds and so on. Your little truck is there, you got this here.
Do you feel like in a hundred and twenty days, you can have the property cleaned?
I would hope so, yes. I have carefully visited with a couple of people about helping me with it.
Well, if the council grants that time period to the form of a motion, there will be fines after that time period. I want you to understand that, but it won't go on at all. Is that correct?
Well, what I'd outline is our, is our timeframe at this time since that was brought up. What we, you know, we would, we would be, we're required to notify owners of the property based on who is on, ownership of record at the courthouse. The council has a few options as to instruct staff on the nuisance of immediate, abated immediately or give some timeframe. Once the council determine, gives that timeframe, staff will notify the property owner via certified The, if the city has not received notification of receipt within ten days of the mailing, property will need to be posted and/or a notice will be placed in the newspaper of local Once the, once it's been completed, the city will file a notice. Once that has been completed, as far as the notification to the property owner, the city will file a notice of lien on the property with the courthouse. And then if the, within the given timeframe, if the nuisance is not abated, then, and council has authorized us to do so, staff will take bids on having any of the nuisance abated and then give the property owner thirty days to make satisfactory, to either pay those fees or make satisfactory payment arrangements. And if within thirty days after the timeframe you've given them, if the property, and it's been demolished or ta, or removed or abated, the city will file a lien on the property or for the dollar amount of the, of the cost of abatement. And that's kind of our process once we get here.
Your honor, I, I'm kind of, the date of the letter that I see in my packet is the 23rd of March, which I'm going to calculate that to be about two, maybe three weeks ago. Are there any letters prior to this that would be notifying landowners and property owners of the conditions of which we are concerned?
On September 8th, 2009, according to the records I have, Mr. Kilmer was sent a letter saying that the roof is inadequate to prevent weather and wildlife from entering. The structure lacks an interior protective coating to prevent further deterioration. The porch structure was unsafe. Trash and clutter occupied the property. Weeds have overgrown the property. And he, at that time, he was given ten days to meet with the then-business manager, Mr. Brown. On September 15th, we have another letter to Mr., of the same year, we have another letter to Mr. Kilmer. As per our agreement discussed, we discussed in the meeting, the following conditions are to be remedied. The property will be mowed within the next ten days. Small trees and brush will be removed to prevent undergrowth, which gives refuge to rodents and other undesirable creatures. The implements are, that are on the property will be moved to make mowing easier. The property will be continued, will continue to be mowed and trimmed as necessary throughout the mowing season. You and I will meet on, meet on December 1st, 2009 to establish a schedule for the removal of the buildings and other articles. Then on March 2nd of 2010, Mr. City Manager Brown sent Mr. Kilmer a letter saying, my notes from our last meeting indicate you were planning to retire in January of 2010 or remove the structures. I want to meet with you to establish a definite plan for removal. Then again, on March 15th, 2010, this letter is to confirm the actions that will be taken to improve the property located at 104 Choctaw. The trees and brush will be removed immediately. The implements stored on the property will be organized in such a manner that allows the grass and weeds to be trimmed. The structures will be removed by August 28th, 2010. It says, then I will make a note on my calendar to check the progress, August 1, 2010. Thank you for making the schedule to remove the structures. Next letter he would have received from that point would have been the one that we sent out on March 23rd. That's the file I have at my disposal today for this address.
There was another structure there that is, that can be restored. I remember how long it's been gone, it has been torn down.
So are you confident within a hundred and twenty days that the issues and matters involved will be resolved?
If I get contact around and someone says.
Hey, I was pulling for you, but we're, we're back 2010 here on notifications and discussions on this. If somebody were to make that motion, you, you're confident or not?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion then?
I've had it already.
I have motion that this structure be removed by, first, oh, let's declare dilapidation, is that correct?
I think indeed, I think the property is dilapidated and needs to be declared dilapidated with the only given a hundred and twenty days. And then the business manager authorized then to take whatever steps are necessary at that time. So it doesn't have to come back to the council and to allow him to do whatever he needs to do to go ahead and complete that abatement.
Is that clear, Mr. Fisher?
The porch part of it is already gone.
I move that the structure be declared dilapidated and we give the resident, or the landlord a hundred and twenty days to remove the structure and then give the business manager authority to take care of the situation from there.
Okay, we have second?
Before we set at that, would, would it be fair to say to remove the structures, but, but to basically also to use the language, abate the nuisance? Because there's more than just the buildings on there.
Nancy, is that clear as much?
Second.
Have a second for Hannaford?
Wait three seconds.
Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Alexia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Kilmer. Item D is 116 Choctaw. Mr. Prophet? Have you a plan to abate this nuisance that the council may move on this evening?
I live in the family.
Do you, do you have a plan to clean the property up that you can share with the council this evening?
I've been cleaning it right now. I've got a pretty big trailer going, stuff, I want to work there. I don't know. When you work five or six days a week, sometimes it's hard to fix. You know, I do go there in the evenings and you.
Would a timetable of ninety days be enough?
Of course.
Is the first action on this property?
This is the first action that I have, this is, this is my complete file. This is what we've talked about today. I do not have it, I do not have any records of anything previous to this at this time.
May I ask when you received your letter of notification?
Okay.
When were you first notified? Do you recall?
A couple weeks ago.
Okay, and what have you done since?
Chopped down trees, hauled off limbs, loaded up a lot of the robbing materials that were all in there. Oh, I did put some siding on as well, other than that, I would.
Okay.
I still need to, like I say, and I want to tear down that shed there that said it was black wood, I want to save the black wood.
You have a motion, Mr. Brown?
What, what are we gonna, are we talking about abating on that? I mean, the roof, your roof looks like it's fairly sound. Is it leaking?
Yes, no.
Okay.
Neither one.
And I, I assume nobody's living there?
No, there's no one living.
Some, in the, in the letter that, that we got, it states the building has broken windows.
The, I'm, that's where I'm going since I leave here. I've never seen a broken window.
Okay, and it says the roof line is rotting and has rotting cedar siding.
Rotting cedar siding. There's cedar siding on it, but.
Well, it's just what the letter shows.
There might be some pieces that need replaced.
Correct.
But there's nothing.
So, I just, I just want to make sure that when we state in our motion that we're not state, I mean, I, I look at that and I can see that that building is not necessarily needs to be completely torn down. However, there is that shed structure with the roof.
Right, right.
So in our motion, would we have to state?
Okay.
And you said ninety days is?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I would, I would make a motion that the property located at 116 Choctaw, the owner be given ninety days to remedy the situations, tearing down the shed with no roof.
Right.
Replace the rotting siding and make sure any broken windows are fixed or secured and doors able to be locked.
The door is locked whenever you close it, so.
I believe in your motion, the trees and the growing up next to the house and all that needs to be removed.
Well, what else needs to be?
Well, hey, let me see if I'm understanding. This is the council's telling him just to go clean it up and then you're going to look at whether it's dilapidated later.
Right after the time.
Because you're basically just saying, we're going to give you this opportunity, you come back. And, and I guess, Joe Don, you'll give, you'd have to give additional notice to him if at the end of that ninety days appears to be dilapidated. You'd have to give more notice and the council would have to consider.
Okay, so modify my motion?
No, you don't have to modify it. I just want to make clear that you're not declaring it dilapidated at this time.
Correct.
You're just giving directions to the land.
Ninety days to remedy.
Correct. Correct. Motion to make, give ninety days to remedy everything in the letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do I get that list?
Sure.
Motion by Miller.
We'll provide it.
Benz.
Front back.
Wasn't anything on the letter. He says it's to me. Did I not read the letter?
All right then, any further discussion? We have a motion to remedy by Miller, second by Hannaford. Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Alexia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item E is 1331 Choctaw. Item E is thirteen thirty-one Choctaw Street. Joe Don, you have a recommendation to table?
Yes.
A recommendation to table, is there a motion to table the dilapidation declaration for thirteen thirty-one Choctaw?
Wait, 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 wait. Oh, thirteen thirty-one, okay. I was off on my list.
Okay. Wait, who, who made the motion? Okay, motion by Valencia, second by Benson. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Valencia?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Okay, the next address is ten fifteen Fifth Street. Once again, the recommendation to table.
Recommendation to table, some notification to the owner of the property.
Okay. So moved by Haniford.
Second.
Second by Benson. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Haniford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The last address is thirteen thirteen Fair Street. We have no one here to represent that property and it is quite unattractive. Is there a motion to declare it dilapidated?
So moved.
Motion by Miller?
Second.
Second by Valencia. Any discussion? How much time do they, are we going to take to do that? Will be done quite, quite reasonably?
Well, we need to give the property owner notification, same time strings, we need to give a notification as to how much time we're going to give them to clean it up before we, before we step in and do that.
But we don't have any idea what plans?
So the motion needs to include a time?
Thank you, we already got a motion that's set on the floor, so you'd need to follow up with a subsequent motion.
Okay, well, let's vote on this then, that it is dilapidated. Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And now a motion to give the property owner thirty days to respond?
Is it thirty days to respond or thirty days to tear it down?
Abate the nuisance, is that it?
Ninety days? One hundred and twenty days?
Motion to give the property owner sixty days to abate the nuisance.
Sixty days. Motion by Miller, second by Brown. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone who attended this evening on this public hearing. Item number nine, discussion and action to approve or disprove ordinance number two thousand and fifteen dash zero five zero, creating a stabilization reserve fund, establishing the fund's purpose, providing for fund contributions, including minimum and maximum amounts to be held in the fund, establishing guidelines for expenditures from the fund, providing for retear, codification, and severability, and, counselor, declaring an emergency. Joe Don?
First of all, on this ordinance, we've been, you know, the finance committee's been working at, on this for the past couple of years and to try to develop a method to start building a financial stabilization reserve. The purpose of this type of fund is to provide monies in case of an emergency. Each of the city's revenue-producing funds would contribute monies to this account. The monies were, which were contributed would be used solely for the fund contributing them, and it would require seven out of the eight council members voting to use monies from this fund. The ordinance also outlines some pretty, some pretty specific ways on how the funds can be used. The packet of information contains some examples of minimum and maximum balances and a funding level that would be required until the maximum is met. The airport cemetery and the ADA funds could possibly fund the maximum amount upon, upon approval by the individual boards. I think once we have this approved, we talk with those individual boards as to how, how their feelings are about the approval, about the setting aside of the maximum amount of funds to make sure we've got all of our bases covered. After the non-operating budget for each year is set, it would need to be evaluated to see if additional funds are needed. As far as examples of, based upon this year's budget, the general fund would require, would require a minimum balance at, of sixteen percent, which is one point two million, a maximum balance of thirty-five percent, or two point seven million. Airport fund, a minimum balance of fifty-eight thousand, a maximum balance of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Cemetery fund, a minimum balance of thirteen thousand, maximum balance of twenty-eight thousand. The ADA Economic Development Fund, a minimum balance of ninety-three thousand with a maximum balance of thirty-five thousand.
Two hundred and four.
And...
Two hundred and four.
Two hundred and four, okay, sorry. The AUA fund, a minimum balance of four hundred and three with a maximum, four hundred and three thousand with a maximum balance of eight hundred and eighty-three thousand. Minimum funding levels for each one, until the maximum is met, for the general fund would be one hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four. The airport fund, seven thousand, three hundred and eight. Cemetery fund, one thousand, six hundred and thirteen. The AED Economic Development Fund, eleven thousand, six fifty-nine. And the AUA fund, fifty thousand, four hundred and eighty-six. This would set our maximum balances at three point nine million, our minimum funding across all funds at two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. As of March twenty-fourth, like I said, some of these funds had enough, either in cash or investments, that the maximum amount could be set aside almost immediately, but I do think that we need to visit with those individual funds af, and individual boards after this is set to set that, before you just set that aside. Be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Joe Don, just for clarification, like the AUA, if they put money into the stabilization fund, it could only be spent for AUA purposes?
For AUA purposes. Cemetery would be spent only on the cemetery, at the cemetery. Airport would only be spent at the airport. Yes.
Is there a motion then to approve the ordinance number two thousand and fifteen dash zero five zero?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand and fifteen dash zero five zero.
Motion by Miller?
Second.
Second by Benson. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Item number ten, discussion. Oh, emergency clause, absolutely, and now declaring an emergency.
We have re declaring emergency for ordinance number two thousand and fifteen dash zero five zero.
Second.
Second by Miller. Motion by Valencia, second by Miller. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Valencia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Now, item number ten, discussion and action on resolution number two thousand and fifteen dash zero nine eight, establishing a safety handbook and exposure policy for the city of Alva. Now, this was on the agenda at the last council meeting for which we did not have a majority, so here we are again, Joe Don.
Well, during the last, the most recent audit slash inspection by the Department of Labor, the city of Alva was cited for not having a proper safety handbook or an exposure policy. Since that time, the city's safety coordinator, and I believe the ambulance director had worked on preparing this policy. At the last public safety meeting, the policy was reviewed at that meeting and then again recommended to the council for passage. The document is required by Oklahoma Department of Labor and OSHA, and once passed this document, its contents will be presented to all of the city employees, and then any new hires would be presented to them during, and gone over with them during their orientation. And once the city council approves it, I would anticipate having a annual refresher, refresher training courses over the policy.
In looking over the policy, a lot of it appears to be common sense things, such as obtain prompt first aid for injured employees. Anyway, it's, it's a necessary item from the Department of Safety, and so is there a motion to approve this handbook?
Make a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash zero nine eight, establishing a safety handbook and exposure policy.
Second.
Motion by Haniford, second by Brown. Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to discuss the fact that frequently items of this nature occur, and it would seem that there would be some general overall record that would require us to review these things on an annual basis when they need annual update, so that we don't fall out of compliance and receive citation from some state governing entity. So I would like to encourage this council going forward to consider putting together a record that would allow them to know that this is due in another year from now, so that we don't fall out of compliance. Joe Don, does the city of Alva have a designated council safety officer?
We do have a safety coordinator that is designated, yes.
Would that fall within his realm of responsibility to make sure this is annually updated?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Haniford?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Item number eleven, discuss and vote to approve resolution number two thousand and fifteen dash zero nine nine, approving an amended and restated trust indenture for the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, providing amendments to the trust to authorize daily valuations and daily accounting for assets within the master defined contribution plans administered by the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, providing for daily valuation of participant accounts in the defined contribution plans administered by the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, and providing procedures and rules for accounting of such assets, providing for effective date of amended and restated trust indenture, and continuing existing trust as amended in full force and effect. Joe Don, what did that just say?
Well, Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund sent this down a few, few weeks ago, and has requested us to approve this amended restated trust indenture. These changes don't apply, don't have any direct impact on our defined benefit plan. Currently, the city of Alva contributes about four point five nine percent on the employee's behalf toward a defined benefit retirement plan, and nothing changes there. This change does affect the defined contribution plan. The city of Alva contributes two point one five percent on the employee's behalf toward the defined contribution with the employee contributing two percent of their salary toward their defined contribution. The major change in this is currently the DC plan, defined contribution is valued on a monthly basis. This we changed to daily. What that means is that should the employee choose to make any changes in his retirement investments, it only happens at the time it's evaluated or at the end, beginning of the month. This change would allow that to happen on a daily basis. After the authorized, you know, the, it basically happened the next day after the employee authorizes the change. Some of the minor changes are adding a definition for daily valuation, having the defined contribution system be able to be unitized using either units or dollars, be able, allow the defined contribution plan to charge a participant in, for any specialized services that they may want, such as loans, investment advice, or brokerage fees, and it also defines the record-keeping for the defined contribution plan. Those are the main things that this resolution changes in our retirement plan. There are some other smaller things that it outlines, such as separate, separating out accounts for liquidating payments more frequently, modifying some language to, for securities and investments for what's permissible under our law, and some record-keeping issues. That's kind of in a nutshell what this new version would, this new trust indenture would, would do for this, to the city of Alva's retirement plan.
Is that what you thought it said, Mr. Benson? But this has been approved by, or viewed by council and...
Council has reviewed it. It is in order for this, as far as form and functionality. This does not happen until all the partic, OMRF participating cities vote to allow it to happen.
Would this be considered customary and reasonable?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion then to approve resolution number two thousand and fifteen dash zero nine nine? Okay, motion by Laio?
Second.
Second by Brown? Sorry. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Laio?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Laio?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Item number twelve, discuss and vote to authorize the city business manager to draft a letter to the Oklahoma Health Department submitting and accepting a new coverage area for the Alva ambulance service.
Well, when, when Woods County, Woods County currently is serviced by three ambulance services, and when these lines were originally drawn to map out the service territories, they really weren't drawn to conform to any established roadway or boundary. So when county nine-one-one dispatchers call out for ambulance services, there's potential to have services cross pa, cross paths in response. Realizing this deficiency, the three ambulance directors met to resolve the problem and came up with a new map, which is establishing new service area boundaries. The new boundary area was designated to allow for the closest department to respond to an emergency. This map is required to be approved by the governing boards of each, each service and the Woods County Commissioners, and once it's approved, the city count, the city of Alva would be required to write a letter of acceptance saying that, send, send that to the Oklahoma Health Department. I believe this item was already presented to the Woods County Commissioners and has been approved, and our ambulance director is here to fill in any of the holes that I may have missed. The ambulance service, the ambulance direct, service directors are in agreement of this. I don't know where they are in the other services about approving this, but you've got a example of what the city of Alva's letter would be to the health department, stating our acceptance of the new boundaries, which is on the last page. The old boundary, you can kind of see on the, on the second page of your packet on how it was just, kind of went down to a point and drew a straight line to another point and then went on, and there's really no, it, it didn't follow any boundaries and that needed to be resolved. And if I've missed anything?
I think that's pretty much something that, uh, just kind of complicating issue on that type of deal. We will, we will, as far as our part's concerned, moving forward, you just have to have to think that it matters, miss a letter, and then I have to submit an application to get the approval from the state department, ultimately they have to... But other than that, I don't know.
So the old map is in yellow, the new map is in orange?
Yes.
Now, would you still be able to offer a, say, the snake hunt?
Yeah, we, we have mutual aid agreements to, with every surrounding ambulance service in the state of Oklahoma to clarify that, but we have mutual aid, I mean, if there's any assistance needed from any neighboring ambulance service... To clarify that, but we have mutual aid. I mean, if there's any assistance needed from any neighboring annual service, then we already have those in place. This is just a definition of who is the first ambulance that gets called for a certain scene, and then it's up to that annual service to request mutual aid as needed.
Looks to me like it hadn't changed, except it just went along the roads on the southwest side of it.
Correct. That was the only change was the, it actually went along roadways from three hundred down to, down to the highway south. But it just went along the roadways now instead of just a straight line. And it also provided a uniform map for Woods County nine one one to go by, Freedom EMS, Milk EMS, and Alba EMS. It kind of, kind of got us all on the same page. There were some, a few different maps depending on which entity it went to, and so that's what allowed us to make it an official for every service that is working in town.
We'll make a motion to authorize the city business manager to draft a letter to Oklahoma Health Department submitting a new coverage area for our annual, Alba annual service.
Motion by Benson?
Second.
Second by Hannaford. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Benson?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Layle?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
And thank you for your service to this community and to this ambulance district. Item number thirteen, discuss and vote to authorize the mayor to sign an easement granting Oklahoma Gas and Electric Company authorization to install and maintain electric transmission and distribution lines at the fairgrounds. Joe Don?
On March twelfth, I received an easement request from O G and E for the purpose of installing electrical distribution lines on the fairgrounds. These lines are needed so that lights can be placed around the go-kart track, which has been constructed on the old horse, horse racetrack. I've sent the, I'd sent the original document to the city attorney for review, and he made some recommended changes. Sent it back to O G and E. They did revise the easement with the changes that he had recommended, and it's now being presented for your approval. The recommendations, you know, once, once you've approved it, they will authorize the mayor to sign that. It is a legal easement. The airport board's members that I have spoken with have stated that they are in agreement with the ability for the racetrack, this easement to be issued. We don't see any problem with the city property or anything that's going on. And I have visited with the fair board president and about the progress that we've been making on this. There, you know, the go-kart, Alba, go-kart LLC would certainly like this to be taken care of as quickly as possible.
And in discussions with their organization, they have to have electricity out there in order to meet some of the requirements as their sanctioning body, and if they are a sanctioned track, then that will increase the draw, therefore making for a better racetrack. Is there a motion, then, to approve the easement?
So moved.
A motion by Layle?
Second.
Second by Miller?
Sure.
Any discussion?
And, and this meets the, the requirements and guidelines of the FAA for that installation? The engineering requirements of?
The easement that we have authorized says that they will not do anything to violate FAA or air, or airport operations?
This isn't above ground lights, Scott, because it goes over the mud pit. It isn't above ground light. Okay, any more discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Layle?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Item fourteen, remarks and inquiries by citizens? Kelly? David? Hearing none. Let's go to item fifteen, remarks and inquiries by council members.
I have one. I don't know how many of you received all calls from the City of Alba or texts from the City of Alba, but I, I kind of feel that it's, I should let everybody know it doesn't have their phone sitting out in front of where Nancy went a while ago. And that she went to make that all call, all text out to the City of Alba about a missing person. So if you're wondering where our secretary went, she was doing double duty for a while. Thank you.
I gather that person's been found in, in apparently safe condition.
Anything else? If not, let's close that meeting and open the meeting of the utility authority with a call to order and a roll call. Nancy?
Miller?
Here. Here.
Brown?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Layle?
We have a quorum. Item number three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March second, two thousand fifteen. B, approval of claims for March sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents, and payroll expenses of forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. And C, approval of claims for April sixth, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents, plus payroll expenses of seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved?
Someone?
Motion by Miller? Second by Layle. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Layle?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item number five, discuss and acknowledge the closure of the homestead revenue checking account, which is no longer needed. Joe Don?
Yes, as we have with a couple of these accounts over the past few months. In June two thousand and fourteen, we started moving toward our pooled cash account. Under this structure, it made certain accounts unneeded and obsolete. The homestead revenue checking account is one of these, one of these accounts that is no longer an obsolete. The checking account has a zero balance. All the funds have been moved to the pooled cash account. Operational changes have been made to make adjustments for payments which will be made from these accounts. At this time, I'd recommend closing this account, which is no longer needed.
Motion to close, to close the homestead revenue checking account?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Benson. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Valencia? Brown?
Yes.
Miller? Uh, sorry.
Still here.
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
And Layle?
Yes.
Okay, that's the last item on that agenda. We'll close that meeting and open the meeting of the Economic Development Authority with item number one, a call to order. Item number two, a roll call.
Brown?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Layle?
Yes.
Miller?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Yes.
We have a quorum. Officer, you may come in.
He probably needs Nancy, because we need to move on, Mr. Brown.
Oh, okay. Item number, item number three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at all ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March second, two thousand and fifteen. B, approval of claims for March sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-four cents, and payroll expenses of nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. And approval of claims for April sixth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-three cents, and payroll expenses of thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Brown. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
It is seconded by me.
Oh, sorry.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Layle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Meeting adjourned.